All right, it's seven o'clock. Call order, binge.
You're.
Chisman.
Present.
McSperrin.
Present.
Myers.
Present.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Prove agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Thompson to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
I talked to Andy a little bit earlier. We've got a Kansas State Bank payment on trucks coming up that we're gonna approve tonight, hopefully. Is that the last payment for this year?
That's the last for this year. That's what complete that chart. And then we have one more payment. It's either May or June.
And I wasn't sure. Maybe you can help me, Jason. That one will be picked up by the Regional Fire Group.
Yep.
The last one.
A little over six grand, somewhere between six and seven grand.
So this should be the end of our...
City obligation.
Yeah. And should be the end of our general operation debt also.
Yep. Yeah, maybe it will be.
Yeah, theoretically.
Yep.
Thank you. Do you take a second?
I'll take a second.
I would second the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second by Chisman to approve consent agenda. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All in favors or opposed? Motion carry. Consent agenda.
I would also make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Thompson to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Second by Chisman. Any discussion?
All. All in his building permits?
We're not at that yet.
Isn't that consent agenda? Who said? Approve the agenda.
That was in approved agenda. So consent agenda. Any more discussion? All approved, or all of... In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All in favors or opposed? Motion carry. Mayor's report. Uh, there is not one because I'm not mayor and Bill has been out of town. He's out of town again today with some issue with his wife. Old Business 2080 Agreement with Blacksburg Historical Preservation Society Resolution 1211-1. This is approving the payment. 2080 agreement, $200 to make up the $1,500. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All in favors or opposed? You have to go ahead and do it. We do roll call. Uh, Chisman.
Aye.
It's all right, you did it. Binge.
Yes.
Uh, McSperrin.
Present.
Myers.
Present.
And Thompson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Present or ayes?
Hmm?
Present or ayes?
Ayes. Presence and ayes, whatever.
Okay.
They got approved and then we did motion carry, or, uh, roll call.
Okay.
Uh, Patty Rollin is gonna present a report for the Blacksburg Historical Preservation Society.
Um, do you want me to do the reporting or would you just as soon have Helen go through it?
It works best for you.
Okay, do you consider it a conflict of interest at all for me to report on behalf of the HPS? Okay, how about we tag team it? Is that all right? Okay. Um, I won't read the whole thing, but we'll kinda just hit some of the highlights. Like to talk about the acquisitions just a little bit. And, um, probably the most substantial asset to the museum this year was the Fritz Opera House. We're pretty proud of that. That was actually donated to us in 2009 by Matt and Jerry Harnish. We put it in storage and then this year we received a sizable donation to go ahead and get it refurbished inside and out. And it's now found a permanent home in the museum. So that's a pretty important piece of Blacksburg history that we've been able to save and put on display in the museum. Couple other things that we've had this year was, um, let's see. We recently received the original ledger from the Blacksburg Baptist Church. It's really an interesting read. The first entry was in 1846 before the city of Blacksburg even existed. So that was kinda fun to read through. Um, we've also got an original high school diploma from Glenn Jones. He was a class of 1926 and it's in a beautiful suede cover from the original Blacksburg High School. We've gotten four World War II letters from Captain or Corporal Dwayne Sweeney. Yep, and he wrote them home to his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Arthur J. Sweeney, when he was stationed in New Guinea in World War II. So if you wanna see what it was like to be in New Guinea in World War II when he rode home to his parents, come to the museum. We've got them on display. It's kinda fun. We've also gotten quite a few advertising pieces donated to the museum this year, so it's been a fun year. We've gotten some really, we're really proud of some of the things that we've gotten. Can you think of any others, Helen, or pretty well covers it?
I think so.
Do you wanna do the education part of it?
Um, yes. BHPS organized and sponsored three educational programs this, this year. The first one was a coal mining town in Michikunak, which, uh, was presented in partnership with Humanities Iowa. And we had a really good crowd for that one. We had eighty people. And, uh, two others that were well attended was, um, World War II POW camps. How many of you knew we had Japanese and German POWs in Iowa? We did. Some of them were pretty popular with the local farmers because they went to local farms and helped. And, um, then we had another one about the Great Depression. And, um, most of you aren't old enough to have lived through it. I did, and it wasn't, but I was little. Okay. And, um, they were all three well covered with the Tomo Courier and/or KTVOTV. So if you missed the actual program, you could've seen it on television. Uh, BHPS also sponsored a trip to Nogu, Illinois in June. And quite a few people went and enjoyed it thoroughly. And it was well advertised. Um, we were very involved with community this year. As always, we were with the Corn Carnival and we had a parade flow. And we also sponsored Nogu on the road as an entertainment educational event. And Chicken Bingo was back. That's always pretty popular. We had to discontinue that a year or two because of chicken flu. And we also sponsored What in the World Is This Contest? And nobody correctly identified chicken glasses or racing cedar. And the museum was also open Halloween night for trick or treating. And, um, in November, we participated in Small Town Christmas. We all sponsored by Blacksburg Loving Shepherd Food Pantry. And we also have Wendell again this year at the Victorian Stroll. Do you wanna do fundraising?
That's about it.
Yep.
For sharing.
Uh, let's see. Uh, BHPS's biggest fundraiser was the Two Day Ice Cream Social, uh, the AA 8:00 PM Labor Day fly-in. Uh, we also did, uh, the Atomo Pizza Ranch, which was my favorite. That was my personal favorite. Uh, we did a silent auction during the Corn Carnival as well. Uh, also at this point, uh, Blacksburg Birthday Anniversary Community Calendars, which features Parks Canon, uh, as the feature, uh, on its cover page. Uh, embarked on a project this year compiling the publications of the Class of 1957 booklet from the Class 60th Anniversary. Uh, and volunteerism. Uh, documented volunteer hours recorded for the museum totaled eight hundred and seventy-eight hours at the end of November. Uh, and our first BHPS appreciation dinner held in recognition of those with significant contributions at the time of sport took place in February, February of this year and was highly successful and well attended.
Museum is open two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to noon. And we encourage all the council and all the townspeople to come and visit us there. I think it's an important piece of Blacksburg and we'd just like to have people come and visit and see what we've accumulated and acquired there. And thanks for letting us do our annual report this year.
Thank you.
We would like you to accept the annual report in a vote, so it gets on record because it's part of the 2080 agreement.
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, agreement.
I'll second that. Motion by McSperrin to accept the agreement. Second by Myers. All in favor discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All in favors or opposed? Lefler Dirt Works contract. Uh, says we're gonna do this resolution in January. Uh, he will accept payments over a one-year period. Do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, talked to him. He did, I told him I wanted to sit down and talk to him and just discuss, you know, uh, terms. He said he'd kinda forgotten about it and, uh, that he was definitely excited to hear that we were gonna make it with him, so.
Good. Thompson? Guess that's pretty much it there. Resolution for the meeting in January, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. They've been offering fire department funds from Urbana Township. This is Resolution 171212. Resolution for the city to repay the Urbana Township fire tax that was paid to the city and not the fire department.
So have we figured out where this $12,000 went?
Went into the city's conference. Where it went from there, who knows?
If someone say that this has been corrected, it won't...
Yep.
It'll go directly and won't come to the city anymore, so.
Correct.
Shouldn't be a long time loops.
Yeah.
Hope so.
Make a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 17 dot 12 dot 11 dot 2. Repayment of the funds that were inadvertently kept by Blacksburg rather than going to the Blacksburg Fire, or the Blacksburg Regional Fire Department.
I'll second.
Motion by Chisman, second by Thompson to approve the Resolution 17112. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All recuse themselves because I'm an officer. You don't have to.
I don't, too, okay, aye.
Because you're not an officer, but... So what was your vote, yea or nay?
Uh, yea.
All right. Uh, all opposed? Four, uh, yeah, I wanted to, four approved, one abstained. Uh, roll call. Chis, uh, Jesus, the Chisman, I mean, first, binge. Chisman.
Aye.
McSperrin.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Thompson.
Did you?
It was approved and then that was roll call. Motion carry, Resolution 17112. I cap grant, discuss how to spend these funds. We were all given a packet of stuff.
That was stuff that I, I once talked to someone about fire extinguishers. And then I heard through the grapevine that there's a possibility of using this money for repair of a fire hydrant that doesn't work. So this is kinda redundant.
Okay. So is the idea to use both the 17 and the 18 towards this fire hydrant or?
Do you have any idea what it's gonna, how much?
I don't know the cost on the hydrant yet. I'm waiting for that cost, but I did talk to Labor Department. He said average fire hydrant cost to replace labor lives on their side is $1,200. Uh, he said absolute extreme. I mean, if something happened with the line, just something totally bad went, he's saying maybe three grand, but he said on average. And he had, uh, the bill was city guy come in and look at it too because they replaced theirs. And he said the same thing, about $1,200 bucks. It's about what it usually costs to have one replaced. And I do believe that's a six-inch line. So he's supposed, he's supposed to be pricing on hydrant floors.
We'll see who's.
Uh, something we might keep in mind, I don't want to derail the fire hydrant deal, but I think one of the things they gigged us on was no climbable cabinet out here for our fuels, so... And I kinda wasn't, I didn't look at them personally, but what they told me over the phone, it's three to a thousand or so, depending on the size and what you have to have, so... I mean, if we spend all this on the fire hydrant, we're probably gonna have to buy a plane-too cabinet down the road, so.
Well, then, could put the 17 funds on the cabinet?
Uh, cabinets not gonna be that much, I mean...
Well, we gotta decide now what to do with the 17 funds. And then the 18 funds can be decided in January, now. Oh, I guess we have to do it before the end of the year, my bad. I don't have that note.
Well, I would want to hang it down to fix this fire hydrant.
Well, I think it's really important.
It's right next to it.
Right across the street from me.
Yep. Here's, here's the things. We know it'll turn on. It's whether or not it'll shut off is the question. And I'm pretty sure it won't shut off.
That's where they should've done, back when they put the road through, because that's probably gonna do damage. Gonna put cement through there.
I don't know because that's far enough away from that hydrant and it was broke before that.
But it was enough of a vibration and all that stuff around through there could've cracked it more at that time.
Well, it's the valve itself, not the line. And last time that hydrant was used was for Sam's old house. And that was when it broke.
How, how much liability does that put us in as a city since we know?
Well, not if we can turn it on, but, oh, turn it off, I mean, you're looking at how many thousands gallons of water's gonna get wasted before somebody can get in there and get that thing closed off? Um, I mean, you can mitigate it by shutting the tower off and shutting the main coming in, but you just shut everybody in town off until that gets fixed.
It's probably the only chance we'll have of having roughly $2,000 given to us to use toward it and not have to take from our water fund. I guess knowing that it could run over though, we may have to dig into our back pocket.
Yeah. I mean, that's, he's pricing it through cloud, so... Alexa, I'm still waiting on, I talked to him last about it Thursday, I think it was. They were like, text you. Wednesday, okay, Wednesday. But, yeah. You can say, let's get a cabinet and put the rest of it towards the hydrant, or just say, let's put all of it towards the hydrant. I mean, I really think the cabinet's important, too. And I don't think you, you're looking at the very large cabinet. I mean, you're looking at like, maybe some paint cans, a gas tank.
Probably big enough to put a five-gallon can or two in, or small cans for weed eaters and chainsaws and, I guess.
So you're not looking at a very large cabinet.
We could do fire extinguishers for $101. It's less the bills that are up for payment.
That come off the?
I haven't taken it off yet. Oh, it was one of the things that they had mentioned maybe.
Do we have any leeway with them of signing up for the fire hydrant? And then if it comes in way over, then we buy these other things, have a backup list. Basically, uh, the insurance carrier's the one that's, we've got to satisfy, right?
I would say on the application for next year, you could put both things on there because you might change and not use some of it for that. Um, this year we have to kinda narrow it down pretty quickly to get it spent on.
So you want this designated 17 to the hydrant? And then on the list for the 18, put the cabinet and the hydrant and?
Can we get a price back before, we gotta do this before the end of the year, correct? Or we have to apply for next year before the end of the year?
We have to do both if I need to.
Okay. So basically, you gotta prove this now or plan on another meeting before the end of the year to prove it.
Okay, and I take it that we need some reflective vests and?
That, I just got those when they said we've got this money to spend some ideas. And when I heard about the fire hydrant, I already had the material. I gave it to Hannah. You'll have it for later this time if we need it. So I don't think, I'd rather see us do fire hydrant or cabinet.
Yeah, but I'm just saying if there's, you know, there's $12 or $14 left over, that's one vest.
Aye.
Um, we got...
Three thousand or more probably, so why don't we got $2,000?
Yeah, I don't know what a hydrant would cost, you know? I really don't know what it would cost. When $1,200 labor, usually they say labor goes matches the price of materials.
I hear you say that.
You're looking at $2,500, man, that probably. Make a motion to spend $1,000, 17, on fire hydrant. 18, to spend hydrant and cabinet. If available funds are left to look for the cabinets. Because they always say, well, it's always...
Yeah. Anyway, it could be $1,200, it could be $1,000, it could be $1,400, it depends on how easy it goes.
If we do, um, if we do the hydrant, we've gotta get it in before the end of the year or just say that we're gonna do that with the money.
I doubt it. Uh, I mean, you could say, hey, Mike, here's a thousand dollars down on the hydrant. I guess you could probably do that and say that you'd spend it.
I mean, we don't wanna lose the thousand, whatever we do.
Yeah. Well, as long as you're saying, you know, it's designated for that and that project is getting done here. He talked about doing it here as soon as possible, so.
Sure. Well, we got great weather for me sending, bro.
Exactly.
Don't have a foot of frost, a day through or whatever.
He's trying to time it because he's gonna replace mine, all of mine. So I think he's trying to time it to do both at the same time, if possible. That would save, save both of us a little bit of money because he charges a little bit, you know, just for the travel, which I understand.
Thankfully, we do have somebody now that'll come to town and work for us, so. Very important.
So, I already made the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, three second.
Thompson's second is hers, so I'll have to deal with that one. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Vibe in favor? Or opposed? Or non opposed? Motion carry. So clarify, $17,000 is going to the hydrant. The 18? The 18, $1700?
$17,000.
$17,000. Oh, jeez, I mean, year 1700.
I'm all for it.
One of them Walt Disney ones. For the year 17, the thousand's going to a hydrant. For the year 18, it's going towards a hydrant plus a cabinet, minus half of it.
Yep.
There we go. I cap grant decision on the hydrant. Oh, no, it's already done. Rate study for water. I think this is coming off the last meeting.
That's misinformation or something to ask for the information.
Oh, someone to ask for information.
Which is something we're gonna have to look at next year.
I wouldn't try to do another one anyway. I wouldn't try to do one every eight to 10 years anyways.
It's supposed to be every five years, isn't it?
2010?
2010, I believe, was the last time they studied with that.
Well, there's, as far as I know, there's nothing stating that we have to do it every five years. Because I think 2010, that's done primarily for the sewer drainage or something.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess council could probably approve to go forward with it. Or wait. I mean, I don't know who requested the information.
I think I'm...
Jason did.
I think I brought it up at the meeting.
Oh, Jason did.
And I got the information and emailed it to City Hall a while back.
I don't see an issue with that, I mean, I don't...
I think it's a good thing.
And it's free, isn't it, off?
Yes.
Now, the code almost requires you to preview that and bring it up. 384.84. You're supposed to go in, make sure you're charging appropriate rates for debt maintenance.
What did you say the code was?
384.84.
The state code? I'll make a motion to go forward with it.
I'll second.
It was a tie. Give it to Chisman this time.
He can have.
Motion by Myers, second by Chisman to go forward with the rate, study request. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All in favors or opposed? I see Chisman's not here. And she requested it to be on the agenda, so it can be talked about openly. Everybody's read this. As much as I would love to help, here's my thought on it. If we were to... If we were to allow this, it would set precedence.
For everybody.
For everybody. And it would basically negate the.
Thing you just did.
The debt.
Yep.
I mean, it sucks, it does, it really does, but there's nothing you can really do about it.
Well.
At that rate of repayment, you'd be like in almost two years getting that delinquent part repaid.
It would be delinquent, cause she'd still be delinquent on the payment that she was short. So it'd be a delinquent, so you keep adding to that delinquent. There's no way.
That's right.
The next issue we run into with this though is, is the church and the house on the same meter?
No.
They are separated.
That's what Gary told me.
Okay. Then that's my mission.
That's what Gary told me.
I think the problem is, is they're on the same shut off, though.
On the outside.
Yeah, Gary was talking today, trying to remember, well, Larry was there. The, he's gonna check to see if it's wide off and he might be able to go over her meter.
That's what he was looking for.
Look in some way, if necessary.
If he could've got in there today, he was gonna see if it was wide, it was a meter here, a meter there, and he was gonna. If we deny this, if she doesn't wanna do this, we shut it off, we take the meter out, we cap the end.
And turn the water back on.
And turn the water back on to the church.
Yep.
That's the word.
That's what, that's what Gary was wanting her to see.
And denying this tonight does not mean it gets shut off tomorrow, it just means that Ina has to inform her of the decision and then she's gotta make. I mean, go through that process, just to make.
I know, I called Doug Harrington, he's worked in the home as well as the church, he remembers what, how it's set up.
And I contacted the church and their, they wanna know what's gonna happen, cause they wanna know.
Well, that's what will happen.
Cause they.
If there is not a separate shut off, then they'll have to shut the whole thing off, pull the meter, plug it, turn it back on.
If it's wide here, we're losing one of them. But Gary was gonna try to gather day, he thought, that he was busy doing two other things, so. But he was gonna check and see if it could be that way, and he was gonna look and see if he could find a cap that would go over there and seal it.
That part's taken care of, but.
So we deny this, so you, did that vote, vote on it?
Yeah, we have to vote on it, but, yeah. I mean, she would never, ever get it. Well, it's not just that, I mean, it's just the fact that it was a presence against something.
Not that too.
Literally just passed and put into.
And everybody'd be back up here on their backs.
Exactly.
You can't show favoritism, everybody's gotta be treated equally.
Well, it shouldn't have got that far, that far anyway.
So, I guess, entertain a motion to deny it or approve it.
Make a motion to deny the request.
Motion by Benj to deny the request.
Paul seconded it.
Seconded by Chisman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. I cap proxy. I wanna explain on camera.
Um, this is just people that consign on issues that have, or lost prevention. And it has Bill's name on it now, mine needed added, and I just went ahead and put Jason in here because, otherwise we'd have to do it again at the end of the month, so. And Bill's, um, awesome.
So keep Bill on for the rest of the year, and, yeah, it's not a reason to do it twice. It has to be by resolution, so the resolution seven two twelve eleven three, uh, I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Myers to approve, seconded by Thompson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All in favor, zero opposed, motion carries. Building permit, call Chisman? Oh, yeah, we'll call the, yeah, sorry, okay. Uh, we'll call for the last resolution, subjecting twelve eleven three. Benj?
Yes.
Chisman?
Aye.
McSperren?
Aye.
Myers? Aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Now building permit for Mr. Chisman. Uh, the only thing I can say is you don't need a permit to make repairs, as long as the fence isn't made higher or the footprint isn't changed.
Otherwise you don't need a permit.
For that.
I thought as a council person, it was my best interest to ask for, ask for a permit and follow the procedure. And there's no question about whether, you know, I don't want any special treatment in this position, in any shape or form.
It's been sixty-six and a half feet by one thirty-two.
I thought the thing I looked at was sixty-six, would that be off?
Six-six wouldn't be enough for one hundred and thirty-two, it should be sixty-six and a half by one hundred and thirty-two, that'd be a half lot. Right?
I always thought a lot was sixty-six by one thirty-two.
But if you put two of them together, it's, it's not, it wouldn't come out right.
With the size of the lot, that's one lot.
But if you put two of them together.
It'd be bigger than that.
It'd be one hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-two.
Correct.
It wouldn't come out right, sixty-six.
Now, I took it off of a survey, so.
Whatever the survey says is what would be on the.
It was a, it was an old survey done by, uh, Graham, that was the, you know, he's gone now.
So we changed the lot sizes then? Cause my two lots back there, when we separated them, it's one hundred and thirty-two by sixty-six and a half.
So you complained about a half?
Well, to make it one hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-two, it wouldn't be right.
I guess I've lost you, the. The lot and where the fence, where the fence.
Hundred and thirty, that way should be sixty-two.
East and west.
East and west.
Should be sixty-six and a half, and there should be a one thirty-two.
Thirty-two, but if you went straight across and made it sixty-six, that, it wouldn't come out to one hundred and thirty-two.
Oh, you're talking about the two lots together?
If you put them together, they don't be short.
Isn't sixty-six twice a hundred and thirty-two?
Yeah.
Well, where are you getting the half, Larry?
Well, it doesn't matter at the half, because if you're gonna put it on the property line, you have to have neighbors' consent. And then, otherwise, I think it has to be a two-foot hold off the property line.
Yeah, I think it's right on the line, I think.
The current fence is right on the line?
I think the, I think the city ordinance says it on the line.
On the line, okay.
And if they have been surveyed, I can find the pin, so.
Well, that's fine.
It's not like I'm trying to make a land grab on my neighbor.
But I mean, if you're under the, there's one sitting over the hundred and, well, it's a half foot, which would make it one hundred and thirty-three, but you're saying one hundred and thirty-two, which is within confines of property. There's, no issue.
Mine's a hundred and thirty-two, they got mine registered, one hundred and thirty-two, sixty-six and a half. That's why mine is registered over there.
Well, I'm saying though, but if he's asking for a hundred and thirty-two feet total, he's within the hundred and thirty-three feet, so he's still within the confines of his property.
What does it say on your app?
Hundred and thirty-two, sixty-six and a half.
So.
All right, what else?
I'm a fan.
That's what, those two lots behind me, just, it's a hundred and thirty-two by a hundred and thirty-two, but they got them split up, sixty-six and a half and sixty-six and a half.
Can't be, doesn't add up, Larry.
But that's what they got.
That's what you said, that's what it says on his app, right?
That's what it says on Landstrack.
Wow. I take it back and have it perfected.
Either way, we're talking about Chisman's property. And the request that he put in for the fence is within the confines of his property.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Uh, motion by, uh, motion by McSperren to approve, I'll second that. Motion by Myers to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm standing.
I'm standing. Uh, all opposed? Four ayes in favor and one standing. Motion carries. Brent Riddell? I didn't see any issue.
I didn't say at all.
I made it with it, um, some may say something about the invisible road, but the city had already set precedence. When it allowed Mr. Freeman to build the garage, his garage on the supposed street that was located in that.
Down, down on End of Pope Street, there was a garage built, and the land was sold to the proper, or I shouldn't say property owner, but the builder of the building, it was sold. And that's been, oh, I'm gonna say twenty years, thirty maybe.
But there's already a garage on there, which.
Wasn't a garage on this one down here, that was sitting on before Cleveland's built one on.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, I thought it was sold to a property at that time, or that garage, cause I think, Tubby put that garage up, and he bought that partial so he could put the garage up.
Well, there wasn't documentation of it, and that's why, I think there's.
Just, that's one thing that we need to do more of, is keep track of stuff, because an awful lot of times it leads to a headache down the road.
Well, and a lot of that is, uh, sales permits, whatever, I mean, building permits, for some reason, like sent to the county. Cause, I mean, once a building permit's signed and dated, until part of that has to go to the cabinet to get.
Therefore, the assessor hands it on to your taxes, I assume.
Yeah. But other than that, yeah, I don't see an issue with my opinion anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by McSperren to approve.
What's happening?
Building permit, seconded by Thompson, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
If you're in favor, we're opposed, motion carries. I cap audit.
State Oliver and Jason E., tell them what.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen twelve fifteen four. In case anybody wants to know, that last audit cost is twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Now, the state would like to have their money.
Yes, they would. Uh, the resolution is to make six payments, beginning January fifteenth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of two thousand, sixty dollars and thirty-one cents. The six monthly payments in consecutive, or?
Yes, they said that we could make it in payments as long as it was paid by August, um, I'm sure we had it in June, in the same fiscal year.
Well, I'll make a resolution to approve.
I'll second it, they want their money and they've got to certainly have it coming.
Mm-hmm. Motion by Myers, seconded by Thompson, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed, motion carries. Roll call, uh, Benj?
Yes.
Chisman?
Aye.
Uh, McSperren?
Aye.
Myers, aye, Thompson?
Aye.
All present. Resolution passes. Uh, workman's comp, visit request for safety procedures, same for the local mains. And that was for the audit.
Two separate visits.
Two separate visits.
In the sheet, I just penciled in some things that we've been working on, so, in response to that.
I guess I'm kinda amazed, because I thought ABS, when they had the fire extinguisher concession came around and, and, you know, checked us within capous legal. And, uh, looks like maybe these other folk, new folks that forgot or didn't have us on the list or something. I always thought the vendor came around and.
They always did.
Yeah, they sure, sure did, John Deere, I mean, they were there.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe he said there wasn't anyone here when he came.
I don't know. Well, I, I think it is, yeah, I can see that one.
There was no city man at the time.
What's that?
There was no city man to get ahold of.
Yeah, I don't know, when was the last time was that you checked?
Two thousand, out here it says two thousand and fourteen, and that fire extinguisher.
Yeah, we definitely had a city guy, you know, during that time.
And I found out, after they're so old, we have, there's several things they can do, be done to them as they age, and then at a certain point, they expire and you gotta toss them and start over.
I say take them, ones that expired and have a little training session on them.
Got it.
Too late, we threw it away.
Oh, no! Oh. So are we back on a regular schedule with them then?
Yes, we are.
What is it, the schedule is four twenty-five, forty twenty-five a year, or?
The forty twenty-five was for the year's inspection, and he has to replace the one for sixty-one. We had had some discussion, uh, maybe needing a fire extinguisher on the tractor and stuff.
Yeah.
I did not want to get, I mean, was there, sure.
I, I, I don't know if it's state owners or city owners, but I think we are, we probably should have one on there. There should be one on the back of the, on the truck.
On the end of the truck.
So, yeah, I think we probably should put one on the back.
Do you want to make a motion to do that? Could be part of the motion on, for the next of this. And the last request there on the van shelter, I wasn't sure who to talk to on that.
You have a press conference?
On the second page, there was, uh, the van shelter itself, it says the electrical outlets.
Oh, the van stage, I, I'm assuming. Cause I know the. Little shelter had all the outlets, you know, replaced.
Little cap.
Was it, the outlets replaced a G N T. It was, the outlets replaced a G and T line and it had outdoor covers.
The bandstand, I believe does, does the grandstander, does not. I guess there's still a hole.
They're talking here about stairs that go to the press box, is that out to the ball lineman?
Yes, yes, that's up to the ball lineman. And where, where are we, that that someone's standing? Is there a timeline on it, like, before, just before we start playing out there again next year, or?
I'm not seeing one anymore.
You should just put, on a response to them, kind of an estimate at least of them.
Okay.
You've got my page.
There.
I got something.
Yeah.
Oh, we're talking about what type of stairs.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, one time they talked about railing on the stage. Evidently.
It was down there.
Yeah, I think we put a chain or something across the back stairs, but that was an issue a year or so ago.
Today I'm gonna, I'm just, I have to schedule a time. I don't know.
Maybe assign one, someone from the council to
I could.
Kind of work on this and see.
Maybe Jason or.
Well, I, I think Jason probably handled the ball field anyways.
Yeah.
Now, don't you live there in the summertime?
Uh, quite a bit.
Quite often.
And as far as the electrical box, I would find out if Gary could legally change those or if we have to have an electrical company come in and perform that work.
I know there's, we're getting stickier and stickier about having licensed electricians do things.
Yeah. Yeah, I would definitely find out if he can do that work or if we have to fire it out. I would say if he can do that, that would be cheaper having him do that. Somebody else can do it. And find out how many outlets need to be replaced, even good cost estimate on.
There's four on the band stand itself and two underneath the front, two or three up in the front of the rail.
How about that? All that wiring probably needs replacing. It might, it might be better off just to have somebody come in and do that work.
Because it's probably not out of wiring anyway, it's probably just regular co-ramps. It's probably not certified for outside.
Uh, I don't know.
A lot of that stuff was ten years ago, you know, with the, kind of the weapons.
Well, I'm going to be something, have the city building inspector inspect it, find out exactly what is.
So go to the mons?
Yeah. I mean, we know the outlets for sure and then he can check the wiring, fuse box and whatever. I would definitely say do that first.
That way, it's no use doing it, finding out, we didn't quite do it right.
Exactly. So we need to set dates as to when this will be performed?
I think for now, just kind of show that we're working on it, and if there's something here, my Donna will make a motion on getting a fire extinguisher to do that and then follow the rest of it, later we.
Well, then, yeah, I'd say a motion for the, the.
Make a motion that we have the fire extinguisher to put on the city tractor.
That's an add to that.
Hmm?
That's an add to that.
Okay. Keep going.
And have the city buildings inspector inspect the bandstand, find out what needs to be done to make sure that thing is completely up to state code.
Jason and Donna, Jason and Donna made the motion too.
I was like, hey.
Hmm? Max Veron. So Donna's motion was for the hydrant and all the other stuff that and Max Veron seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor, there are all opposed, motion passed, carries. Postpone January regular council meeting to Wednesday, January tenth, twenty eighteen. Oh, still on that one? I thought we just did that one.
I don't know.
Did I count it?
I thought that was part of it. I guess I didn't put it in.
Here.
Thank you. Yeah. Actually, she knows a lot about the money. After review of facilities and the opportunity to visit the staff members regarding safety and loss control issues, I feel that your entity has taken initiative in implementing a number of safety procedures that have contributed to a generally safe and compliant workspace. As mentioned during the visit, there are still some areas of concern that should be addressed promptly. This letter outlines the findings and makes recommendations based on that review. Is it up here? Review and update designated physician policy.
They have a regular workman's comp, I did find a letter where they had contacted the clinic at Albion that I couldn't find anything saying that we have definitely.
I kind of remember, we chose them and thought that would be the closest place to, you know, there's various doctors up there, you know, to be sure of somebody that.
The other one was adopted general safety manual.
He wanted a safety manual, also like a disaster plan, a few other just safety issues. This, um, web link that I gave you on, uh, here.
Yeah.
Is where you can go look at their sample ones and he said we could use those if we want to understand the little tweaks that we need to pull it into.
This is to add to the disaster control area.
It has like, uh, safety manuals and any of those things that you already have or need to have, you can look at.
Cool. So this is basically just an information.
Yes, it is, um, we can send it back when we finish.
Complete those.
Complete those.
Um, should we get some people designated to make sure those are finished, get completed, or?
We can do that.
Which one of you three want to do it?
I'll do it.
All right. Sorry. Yeah, I'm so thrilled. You didn't take care of the. What?
It's cold enough, I can handle it.
So you're gonna do your first one, the, uh, physician. Who wants to do the? Well, Brian, you know, something about, you probably know more about computers and looking at stuff up than Mr. Chisman, unfortunately. You want to take that one?
Yeah.
Max Veron's gonna take over, head up the, uh, manuals. If you want to help either one of them, jump right in. Let them know how you, you know, discussed your computer. They're not friends. Anything else on that? All right, let's move on.
Just a second, I'll review.
Oh.
Did they, did they say that that, you know, having that clinic as our primary care, was that a no now, or do we just have to?
We have to have one specialize in the policy about who's going to be our physician.
Okay.
So they have a model policy that we can look at and we'll just fill in the information for the clinic.
This is all just in the case of an accident?
I don't see that, I think that was one of the reasons they chose that clinic was, you know, there's multiple doctors up there, so that we're gonna have to be a little more specific, I guess.
So the doctor on call won't credit.
What's that?
So the doctor on call won't give it.
Evidently not.
Hmm. Well, you can have a primary care physician. And then, you know, if it's an emergency, another doctor's gonna take care of it. And it's gonna be referred to the primary care physician on follow-up, checked out or whatever. They're not gonna sit there and make a wedding with your hand felt. Any more discussion on that before we move on? All right, moving on. Now, postpone the January regular council meeting to Wednesday, January tenth, twenty eighteen.
At my request, I've got, uh, basketball games on Monday, Tuesday night, so it's a job conflict. So, just hoping that meeting number one just gets pushed back a couple days in January, so.
Boy, I don't know, I don't know if I can make that meet.
Yeah, I know one of them's out there, you know, me, and, yeah, Tuesday night, so. My question, postpone the January meeting, January tenth.
So approve the resolution seventeen twelve eleven five?
Yes.
Benj makes a motion to approve the resolution seventeen twelve eleven point five?
I'll second it.
I'm just, we're just to change the date.
I mean, when you have a stated by ordinance, you have to. But, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All in favor, there are opposed, roll call, Benj?
Yes.
Chisman?
Aye.
Max Veron?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Thompson? Oh.
Aye.
Ms. Powell?
Hey, hey. I'm standing between you guys and we getting out of here, so I won't talk this long, it's still on tonight. No PowerPoint, just a handout for everybody. Um, talk about our library's annual report, and this is for the fiscal year seventeen, so it's from July one, twenty sixteen, through June thirty, twenty seventeen. So I've got a handout here for you. Uh, basically, we had a really good year at the library, very, very busy. Um, just some quick facts here, we had nineteen hundred and twenty-nine items checked out and or downloaded, so that's, uh, we get credit for circulation for the ebooks and audiobooks that are downloaded as well. We had thirty-four hundred and forty visitors in one year. We were open eleven hundred hours, um, basically that's twenty-one hours a week on average. We have quite a few Facebook likes and followers, and on our website, we had over three thousand seven hundred and nineteen people come to the library's website and check it out. Um, on the top front page, you can see our revenue sources, and I'm gonna make the city a little bit happy because I've got money to give you. We have our first half check from Waukato County for three thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, and hopefully I'll get a receipt for that a little later. Um, that's our first half funding from the county, we'll get our second half later. Um, basically, and that's for fiscal year we're currently in, um, it's just a little bit less than what we got last year. Last, we got sixty-two hundred and sixty from the county, forty-five hundred from the city, seven hundred and seventy-three from the state library, a thousand dollar grant money, and then we had donations and, uh, six hundred and fifty-seven, and our library board and friends group helped us, and we raised thirty-seven hundred and four dollars. Um, you can see what our expenditure's for, by far the biggest one is staff, and we are still not paid very much money, but that's okay. Um, that's the biggest expenditure without, about any business, since you're going to be your staff. Um, we spent over a thousand dollars on print materials, uh, five hundred and twenty-six on videos and audiobooks. Um, our downloadables, we spent three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and that gave us access to forty-nine thousand and three hundred and eighty-two items, so that's a pretty good bang for our buck. Um, and then our, um, other operating costs, four thousand three hundred and ninety-six, that would be rent, that would be supplies, that would be postage, um, all those types of things, forty dollars on our databases, um, that's our, to get research articles from magazines, journals, newspapers, and that sort of thing. So again, that, that one, we had, um, a hundred and seventy-eight articles retrieved from that database, so that was pretty good, um, also use of our forty dollars there. Really big year, started out with Rag Ride coming to visit, we had over seven hundred people in one day. Visit the library, mostly coming in to use the restroom, to use the wifi, because the route they had been on that year, and because of their carriers, a lot of them had not had internet all week, so they were really happy to get to a place where they had internet. Toilets that flushed and air conditioning, so they were pretty happy. Um, we had a summer reading program on your mark, get set, read, we capped out with, uh, our eightieth birthday party. The Blakesburg established a library in nineteen thirty-six, so we celebrated our eightieth birthday in twenty sixteen. We had a birthday party with some hot dogs and some food and munchies, and then same day was the I Cubs game, we had free tickets to people who earned them from our summer reading program to go see the I Cubs. Um, and that'll be again this year too, we had some more people go again this year. Um, so busy summer, we started off the year with our open house, back to school, we hosted Crazy Eight's Math Club, this was a math club for kids in third through fifth grade. Lots of fun crazy activities, you can see on the second page, we did glow-in-the-dark geometry, that was one of our events, Toilet Paper Olympics was another one. So lots of really fun activities to get the kids involved in learning math and math skills. Um, so that was a lot of fun, we did that, we had two eight-week sessions, season one and season two, we had about twelve kids participating in that program each time. Um, in October, we had our crock-pot cook-off, our three-annual, that's gone really well. Um, November, we participated in the Loving Shepherd Food Pantry Small Town Christmas. We also, through our friends group, had applied for and was awarded a seven thousand dollar grant, and in November, we bought all the hardware and the software, peripherals and projector, laptop, computer, um, AV cart, all kinds of good things to go that, I brought that stuff here for my one meeting, so you all got to see some of that in use. Um, we also were awarded a thousand dollar Alliance Energy Grant, um, that was one that the library, I had written. Um, that one, we purchased audiobooks, um, we have a lot of, well, we have some people who are visually impaired, older people like me, who can't see the print in the books so well, so much, so the audiobooks are really good for them, um, also good for emergent readers, people are just learning to read, or people who have reading problems, sometimes they like to listen to books. Also, we have people like to listen to books while they work out, or while they do housework, or whatever, so, um, we got that, and also a CD player headphone. Uh, also with that grant money, we purchased our annual movie license, so we can host family film events. Uh, we also purchased a new Wii game and controllers, and a NASA Littlebits electronics kit, um, for some part of our STEM education. January, um, that was when we really kicked into high gear for fundraising, we worked concessions at all the junior high basketball games in Blakesburg, and then we also did some tournaments that they had on weekends, that was really how we did the bulk of our fundraising last year. Um, so we did that, uh, we had our annual father-daughter dance in March, we call that a father-daughter dance, but there are kids who maybe don't have dad with them, so they can bring an uncle, they can bring a grandpa, they can bring, bring mom. Um, we don't care, we just want the kids to come and feel, uh, welcome and have a great time, the little girls get all dressed up, daddy gets dressed up, or whoever their, their date is, and they just have a really good time with that one. Theme last year was a, a luau, and I think they really liked it, had a lot of people in Hawaiian shirts and ladies and grass skirts and stuff, it was fun. Um, so we do that, that's a fundraiser that we do, and, and again, that's open to, we had a hundred and thirty people, um, come to that. We had National Library Week in April, the ball parents came in and registered their kids for summer baseball, um, in. Um, in May, we started planning for that summer reading program, which was Build a Better World, um, that we did this, this summer. And we kicked that off in June, which was also the end of our fiscal year. Some of the partners that we worked with in the last year, the Loving Shepherd Food Pantry, um, the elementary teachers and the staff there. We also worked with the parent-teacher organization, the Methodist Church. The Methodist Church bought a bunch of books. They worked with the school, the Scholastic Book Fair, bought a bunch of books, gave them to the library. And when a kid wanted to, they could come in and pick out a book to take home and keep, not one that they had to return. So that was a really great program. That was a, a read a million minutes or something that the church had going. So we worked with them on that. Um, distributed the books for them. We worked with the Corn Carnival Committee, the Ball Parents, two four-H clubs, the, uh, Boots and Blue Jeans and then the Clover Kids, I think. Um, and the Historical Society, uh, we worked with them on some of their projects, um, share some of our technology and stuff. So, uh, very busy with the community, doing a lot of things. And in addition to our Crazy Eight's Math, which was two six-week, two eight-week sessions, uh, we hold family film nights. We had karaoke days or events. We had adult computer classes. Um, we had Lego and gaming and then other events. We actually had five hundred and eighty-three individuals, participated in fifty-nine events in FY seventeen. And we're always open to suggestions for new ideas. We tried some adult coloring. Nobody came to that one, so. Um, we also tried scrapbooking one night and had one person show up for that. So we're willing to try anything that you're, uh, might suggest for us to do. Um, some of the stats there at a glance, again, thirty-four hundred and forty visitors. We have six hundred, six thousand five hundred and fifty-six physical books in our collection, thirty-three thousand eBooks. Um, we have tablets. We hold classes. We teach you how to use a tablet. You let, we let you check out the tablet, take it home and practice using it and do your eBooks on that if you would like to. Um, eBooks or audiobooks. You can download either to those. Um, so we have a lot of, of resources available. Uh, which totally, total circulation last year was nineteen hundred and twenty-nine items. At a cost of twenty-five dollars per item, we saved members of the community forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars if they had to go and buy those items themselves. Our circulation to residents in the city, we had eight hundred and thirty-three. We do have a lot of rural patrons as well. We serve people in Waukelo and even in Monroeb County, but Waukelo County is where we get our funding. But we had seven hundred and four items circulated to them. We sent out a hundred and twenty-five items to other libraries. We have a really good collection. I send more items out from this library than I do my college library. Um, so that means that we have a good collection that's in demand and other people wanna borrow our books as well. Um, annual computer use. A lot of people in this town do not have computers or do not have internet. We were open eleven hundred hours. We had seven hundred and thirty-seven people using computers during those hours. Um, again, fifty-nine programs, five hundred and eighty-three people attended. Uh, total physical collection is seven thousand two hundred and thirty-eight volumes. Um, again, if we put a twenty-five dollar value on those items, our collection is worth one hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred dollars. And again, we only get forty-five hundred dollars from the city. So this is collection built up over the year. This is also, we have some items donated to us and we do purchase items. We have to spend, um, to maintain our state accreditation and our funding through the state, at least ten percent of our total budget has to go to buy materials. So we do that every year. Um, if you wanna count the value of all those eBooks and things that we also have access to, and again, we paid three hundred and twenty-seven, um, dollars for that in a year. And the total value of that is, uh, one point two million. And so we have access and all of our patrons have access to those twenty-four seven. You can download three books at a time, keep them on your device for fourteen days. Then they're automatically checked back in, no overdue fees, no fines. Um, and you don't have to pay Barnes and Noble. You can use those for free. And that's what I think we really need to stress about the library. It's free, it's open to everybody. We don't discriminate on, discriminate on age or gender or race or your socioeconomic status. We're there for everybody to use. Um, we do have a lot of people in town who cannot afford internet or afford computers, so they're certainly welcome to come and use ours. Um, the second sheet I gave you is actually just a thing for the city council. And, um, this is out of our trustee handbook. It was updated in twenty fourteen. They look at ISO, they look at city ordinances and things. And just so that everybody knows, what is my role? It's the library director. What is the board's role? What is the city council, the mayor's role and what the city clerk's role is for us? Um, our city clerk is our financial agent. They pay all of our bills. Um, the mayor appoints the library board members. And if they're our city, we have three library board, board members from within the city, then the city council approves those people. They, we have six-year terms. Um, and then we have two people from the county because we also serve rural residents. And those people are appointed by the mayor and then approved by the county supervisors. Um, once we have our board in place, they hire the director, they set policy, they control the budget. They are ultimately, ultimately responsible for all of the, uh, money that the library receives. The city council and the mayor allocate how much money they're going to give the city. All of our money that we make through fundraising, our county money, our state money, all comes into the city. But then it is all in a fund for library purposes. The board approves how that money is spent. Every month, I present them a list of bills with receipts. They approve them and once they're approved, the city clerk pays them. I think there's been some misinformation in the past where the city council thought they had to approve the library's bills and that's not the way it is. Once the board approves them, they just need to be paid. We've had issues where bills were not paid on time and then we get charged a late fee and have another bill with two months wait on it because we meet the third week of the month, the city council meets the second week of the month. By the time we would meet, if they were held until after the city council meeting, sometimes our bills were late. So we don't want that hackup to happen, so I just want everyone to be aware of what everybody's roles are. Um, so things coming up at the library. Saturday night, if anybody loves trains. Uh, Michael Potts is one of our library board members. He had helped set up a big train display at the Victorian Stroll in Albia. He has the Polar Express train set with the Christmas village and all that stuff. He is going to set that up in the library. We are going to have a film, um, related to the, the book, Chris Vennels' book, Polar Express. Um, and then we will be serving hot chocolate cookies and popcorn for free. The movie is free. Um, it'll be there Saturday night. We start at six o'clock and then after, uh, Michael is also going to be doing a little bit of, um, presentation on trains, history, safety, something really brief, maybe fifteen minutes or so. We'll start the movie. And then afterwards, he will have the train set running, so anybody who loves trains can come and watch that. It'll be pretty cool. So that'll be Saturday night, the sixteenth, at six PM. Um, at the library, we are in the middle of a fundraiser right now. We're doing our silent auction basket. So if you have somebody out there you haven't bought a Christmas present for, we have a lot of great themed baskets. We have a family fun basket that includes movies, uh, games, um, passes to go to the T-Rex mini golf, lots of good things. Um, there's a Cookies for Santa and the Night Before Christmas baskets, two different ones. We have a cozy comfort, comfortable Christmas basket, a spa-a basket, which has a bunch of stuff to pamper the, a woman. We have a Starbucks basket, lots of Starbucks drinks and, um, gift cards, a Creative Krafter one, and then we have a Man Cave one. So if anybody's got a guy out there they need to buy for, it's got bottle cap darts and beverage tasting and beverage pong and a bunch of different things there too. So lots of different baskets. We will take bids on those through the twentieth of December. You can pay for it and pick it up on either the twenty-first or the twenty-third, and we will take cash or checks. Um, there will be, I think everybody's heard that the Friends of the Library has bought a building. Um, there will be a meeting to find out information about that on Monday, January twenty-second at seven PM at the library. So anybody's got questions, they're welcome to come down and sit in on that meeting. Um, and then our, we'll be starting our planning for results. That's something we have to do. Have a strategic plan for our state funding. That'll be after the first of the year. I don't have a definitive date yet from Becky Kyle. She is the consultant from the state library for this region. She is going to facilitate that process for us. Um, we wanna see what the library can do for the future. We wanna get public input. We might have somebody from city council, anybody from city businesses, anybody from churches, organizations, education. We wanna get a lot of public input because this is your library. And we wanna offer the services and the collections that you want. Um, I'm almost done. I promise. I got one more thing on here. Um, budget, we submitted, the board approved our budget proposal at its meeting, um, last month. We submitted it to the city council in our packet, so I, hopefully they've seen it. Um, we know money's tight. We have not asked for any increase. We haven't asked for an increase ever since I've been here, since twenty fourteen. Um, so again, we're please asking if we can get our forty-five hundred dollars. Again, that's only about twenty-seven percent of our entire budget. Um, I don't think there's any other departments that are funded that minimally. That is the city department. The rest of it is state, county, and then our fundraising and our donations and our grants. Um, so we do a lot of work to try to fund that. Um, I looked at our hours. We got forty-five hundred dollars last year. We were open eleven hundred hours. So basically, the city paid four dollars and nine cents an hour for us to be open and serve the public. Um, and we do have a lot of good services. A lot of kids come down there. They're open from the time we're open up in the morning till we close at night. Have to shoo them out of there. Occasionally, they get a little rowdy, but we take care of that. I'm a mom of three boys. No problem. We can handle it. Um, so, but we do have lots of services for all ages. And we would like everybody to be invited to come down to feel welcome, um, and use the library. It's here for you and, um, you know, your tax money helps pay for it, so we want you to come and use it. Any questions?
I just had one out of curiosity.
Yes.
Like during the summer, you talked about the adult coloring thing. Is it, I don't know how far the library can reach out for this, but like over here at the little pavilion thing they have and then maybe over there?
Do outreach programs?
Something like that.
Instead of doing it in the library?
Yeah, do, you know, maybe those people can't make it out there. Maybe they wanna be interested in doing that.
It's possible.
I was, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to try some things, but again, we have limited hours that we're open.
Yeah.
Uh, I work a full-time job, so I have to come around that. Chris is more flexible because she's retired from her full-time job, but she does still sub quite a bit of the school. And then we have Carrie Glosser, who also, um, works for us part-time when we need her to fill in. But yeah, I mean, we're, we're willing to try outreach. We're willing to try anything. That's why we want people to come to our meeting and offer some of those suggestions. As we go through our planning for results and our strategic planning process, um, you know, maybe we need to have a collection and deliver books to the mayors. You know, something like that, large print books or something. We're willing to try whatever we need to do. Um, but we want people to know that this is your library. We're here for you. Um, and we wanna provide the services that you want and need. And, um, we, last summer, we had something on this calendar every single day. People didn't always show up, but we had something scheduled every single day. We had something for different ages. Um, so, you know, we'll do what we can.
I think you're doing a great job out there.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, unless anybody has anything else, let's edit. Entend the motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make that motion.
Motion by experience to adjourn? Second by Thompson? All in favor?